Yeah, that's good.
Cousin in law.
Welcome to the October 19th meeting of Murfreesboro City Council. Councilman Kurt Wade has our prayer and our pledge.
Let's pray. Well, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for what you do and how you do it. Lord, you, we asked you to bless this council tonight to make moves there in the best interest of our city. But most of all, we just ask you to bless our country, bless our nation, bless Israel. Lord, continue to do what you do, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I heard somebody back there that was very enthusiastic about our pledge of allegiance. Ms. Green, is that your daughter that's back there?
Oh, that's awesome.
That's always good. Don't ever stop doing that.
That's right.
All right, we have a Stars Award tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here this evening to recognize the recipient of the Stars Award for the month of September. Stars Awards recognize and reward city employees who go above and beyond their normal job duties by providing outstanding customer service to our internal and external customers. Tonight's recipient is a young man who responded immediately to a person in need involving a burning vehicle on the side of the highway. He showed courage, valor, and a sense of urgency in the face of despair. Tonight's recipient is Richard Johnson. Richard is a water resource operator for our water department. He has been with the city since April of 2022, and he's here tonight with his wife, Jeanette. Richard was recommended for the Stars Award by Todd Adams, the safety coordinator for the water department. Mr. Adams reported that Mr. Richard Johnson was driving his dump truck along John Bragg Highway on the morning of September 14th, when he noticed a burning vehicle on the side of the road. The driver flagged Mr. Johnson down, and he quickly exited his dump truck, grabbed his fire extinguisher, and commenced to putting out the flames around the vehicle. Mr. Johnson's prompt response prevented injuries and further damage to the person's vehicle. I'd like to thank Mr. Todd Adams for sharing this story so that we can take a special time out to recognize Mr. Johnson as a star in our city. Therefore, Mayor and council, Richard is obviously a person of courage who cares for his fellow man, and he's certainly a star in the eyes of the city, and especially for the driver of that burning vehicle. Mr. Richard Johnson, on behalf of the mayor, council, and the great city of Murfreesboro, it's my pleasure and honor to recognize you as the Stars Award winner for the month of September.
All right, we'll move to our consent agenda. You have seven items. Is there anything that needs to be moved off the consent agenda for discussion?
Mayor, I would like to move items number one and three for further discussion.
All right. You have two, four, five, six, and seven on the consent agenda for approval.
So move.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to minutes. You have the minutes of the city council meeting, October 12th, 2022. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to old business. You have a sewer allocation variance for Old Fort Parkway, and this is Dutch Brothers. Mr. Baumley?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This item was brought before you on August the 16th for a sewer allocation variance. It's the property located on the northeast corner of the Old Fort Parkway, Frontage Road, and Market Place. There's an existing vacant bank building on the site right now. It's been abandoned for a year or two, and this is directly across Market Place from the Panera. The request is to redevelop this site with a Dutch Brothers coffee shop. The planning commission reviewed a site plan for this redevelopment on August the 16th and recommended its approval subject to staff comments, including council's granting of the variance to the sanitary sewer allocation ordinance. At the August 17th city council meeting, the council heard this request for the first time and voted to defer action after expressing some concerns regarding traffic and the transportation network around this site. But I do have the approved site plan up on the screen for your reference. And just to go over a little bit about the traffic design of this site, you'll see that on Market Place, at the north end, at the rear of the site, they have a full access point with a full in and a full out. And then further to the south, closer to the intersection of the Frontage Road and Market Place, there is a right-in only, so there's no outbound traffic out of the site that would be leaving this particular driveway, just right, right in only, no left in. And then along the Frontage Road, originally, the applicants proposed a right-in, right-out only. However, in staff's review of the application, our project engineer in consultation with our transportation department recommended that they also include a left-out of the site. And the reason for that left-out is, and this kind of shows you the transportation network around this site, but the left-out would be to facilitate movement back to the Mall Circle Drive, Bridge Avenue, traffic signal. So if someone was heading into town, rather than forcing them to, or encouraging them by the site design, to go back to the intersection of Market Place and Old Fort Parkway, this would allow them to turn left and head back to the Mall Circle Drive traffic signal. And you can also see the other ways to get in and out of this site would be to head north, back up towards the Market Place Shopping Center and to Robert Rose Drive, and then west on the Frontage Road, which could take you back out to the Sam Walton Drive traffic signal if you were intending on heading north to, north up Thompson Lane. As far as queuing on the site, our zoning ordinance requires a minimum of 10 queuing spaces, and they are proposing, their design includes 23 queuing spaces, so there are more than double the number of queuing spaces that are required by our zoning ordinance for this site. There was discussion at the city council meeting regarding whether or not this particular portion of the Frontage Road would be closed. In an email from our city engineer, Ms. Emerson, this afternoon, Kim Lee Horn, TDOT's consultant, is in its study period right now and is reviewing the whole Old Fort Parkway roadway system from the bridge over Broad to I-24. And this would be a component of that study. And so we do not anticipate having the results of their study until January or perhaps sometime after the beginning of the calendar year. So with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant did request that this come back before you. Mr. Brick Murphy, representing the property owner and Dutch Brothers, is here. And I believe at some point he would like to address council, but I'll be happy to answer any questions as you discuss this item.
Any questions for Mr. Baumley?
Everybody knows where I stand on this project. I just don't, I think it's too high a effect of a use with that intersection still in place.
So if we have a study going on, what is the protocol? What's the protocol with that?
I'm sorry, did you hear the question?
So you're saying that there's a study going on? I mean, that...
There's a study that is, that Kim Lee Horn is conducting for TDOT in conjunction with our public infrastructure department. That is ongoing. We expect there to be some information, results from that study, early 2024.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, do you have something to?
Yes, Mayor and council. I just request that this matter be deferred to the next council meeting, two weeks, and then we can, the engineer will be here from Reagan Smith, and we can discuss what you guys would like us to do.
Okay. Is it possible that between now and then, if they are considering, Mr. Baumley, you were talking about considering closing North Front, that they're studying closing North Frontage Road?
I think that's an element of what they're studying. Now, whether or not they will recommend that, I think remains to be seen.
Okay.
But it's an element of the larger corridor that they're studying.
I think it'd be good that with this applicant or proposal that everyone talks about that before that got to us, so that way, you know, beginning of the year, if that came back to us in the council, we got a recommendation to close that road down, to make sure that everyone was on the same page, that no one was surprised if that did happen, you know, three or four months from now.
Yes, sir. Mr. McKnight has been communicating that with Mr. Murphy and encouraged Mr. Murphy to wait until the results of that study we're in before we brought this back. But I think Mr. Murphy wanted to bring it back before you and for some additional discussion.
Okay. I mean, I don't know how to contact him or who this is, but every time I get on Instagram, Dear Murfreesboro is doing something about this interchange at Old Fort Parkway and Target, so maybe we could get them to come talk about how we fix it. But there may be, there's a lot of discussion about this intersection, so hopefully with the applicant and what we have being discussed, there can be some good ideas that will come back on how we look at traffic around that area.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion for deferral?
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. We have land use matters, rezoning property along Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. I will, I did forget an item. Mr. Baumley, you can still stay up there. Under the Stars Award, we have public comment and actionable items, and we had no one sign up to speak tonight. So for the record, I want to make sure that I've mentioned that. All right, and I'm rolling on jokes tonight, much like no one showed up for public comments and actionable agenda items, just like Auburn didn't show up last week. We'll move on to new business. Mr. Baumley?
I knew that was coming. Probably be a similar joke after the Ole Miss game this weekend as well. Mr. Mayor and council, this request is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. It is property that you rezoned last year from mixed use to PUD. And so the area that is in the kind of salmon color on the map before you is what you rezoned to PUD last year. That's 11.4 acres. The request today is to amend that PUD and also to rezone the corner area that is currently zoned commercial highway. It's in the green color on the map, which is about 2.4 acres, to also to include it in the PUD. And the PUD, the applicants are desiring a little bit of additional flexibility in their design. And I'm gonna go to the concept plan real quick. One of the things that they are proposing is to divide this into four separate lots. And you'll see Lot 1 is in the pink, Lot 2 is in the yellow, Lot 3 is the corner parcel that they're including in the plan development. And they have the common space access drive, and so that will be a common area for the subdivision. And so because they're looking to divide it, it kind of rubs up against a number of our zoning requirements. And one of the things that we always say in the planning department is that property lines create certain expectations, expectations of building setbacks, landscaping requirements, and things of that nature. And so you'll see that there is a list of exceptions included in the pattern book, and I won't go over all of those exceptions. But that list of exceptions, many of which are actually arising from the fact that they are creating these property lines, instead of including that common access drive on its own lot of record. So the existing plan development includes 232 multifamily dwelling units on the pink area, as well as some retail. The yellow area, it's 60,000 or 65,000 square foot, five-story office building. What they're proposing to do there is to reduce the amount of office square footage to 12,000 with a maximum of 8,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space. And because the amount of, the additional amount of parking that's required for restaurant space, and they're really hoping to have some restaurant users in that yellow area, that reduces the amount of square footage. And so depending on how the retail, restaurant, office mix works out, that building could be as short as one story, but still could be as high as five stories if it ends up being predominantly office. And of course, Lot 3 is a retail use that they are proposing on that Lot 3 that they are including in the plan development that is not currently included. The pattern book that you have in your agenda materials today has a couple of revisions. What they've done is they have more detailed elevations for the proposed user on the corner parcel. And so where there was just one rendering in the pattern book that went before planning commission, they have detailed elevations of all four sides that have been included. And they've also noted another exception that white is allowed to be used as a primary color on the Lot 3 commercial building. And that's consistent with the rendering that the planning commission saw at its meeting last Wednesday. Speaking of which, the planning commission conducted a public hearing and then voted to recommend approval of this zoning request. We'll need to conduct a public hearing tonight, and after which we'll have a vote on first reading. Mr. Rob Mulchen with SEC has a brief PowerPoint presentation that he'd like to go over, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Mr. Mulchen?
You're the mayor, members of council. I'm Rob Mulchen, SEC. Accompanied tonight by Mr. Ross Bradley of TDK Construction. We're here tonight to request an amendment to the PUD in regards to the TDK corporate headquarters and vintage mixed-use development. Matthew talked about this project is located at the southwest corner of Robert Rose Drive, Medical Center Parkway. You can see the property is look, has been subdivided into a PUD and CH, as Matthew talked about. And today, we're gonna look at the request to, from the previous plan that you see here in relationship to the PUD with the commercial highway in the corner and right being changed to a full PUD, so more incorporating the CH into the PUD. As Matthew talked about, we're, part of this is that we're gonna take, instead of this being one unified lot, we're gonna create four separate lots. As Matthew talked about, the pink area, the Lot 1, is our proposed mixed-use retail, retail residential mixed-use portion. The yellow area in the right corner is the Lot 2, which is the office and retail and restaurant component. The upper right corner in the purple color, I mean, it looks a purple or blue color up there, that is more, that is our new commercial parcel that was not part of the PUD. This is what we're asking to be pulled into the PUD as we've now kind of moved forward with potential user for that property that we didn't have a year ago when we brought the PUD through. And Lot 4 would be the common shared access drive, access to these properties back out to Maple Grove Drive, Medical Center Parkway, and Robert Rose Drive as well, as long and also providing connectivity from McAllister's Deli as well. In your book, you have this chart that's more or less kind of outlines the differences between the PUD that was approved last year and the PUD we're requesting tonight. I kind of moved through the different zones here to talk about some of the changes in the zones. Lot 1, the mixed-use zone, this is the area that we have four buildings in it. The three buildings that front onto the shared common drive that runs east-west has retail on the front side with residential on the first through four stories and that. So we're still staying with the same four stories, still 60-foot maximum heights. It's gonna include outdoor seedings, plaza areas, sidewalks, on-street parking, and large amenity areas. We're also, we're asking for this, change on this is to allow for an allowance to go from the previously approved 13,000 square foot retail to allow that maximum to move to 15,000 square foot for retail on that lower floor, and also looking at removing the shuffleboard from the amenity package as well. Here's a couple of views of what we're anticipating the development to look like. You can see the retail component on the lower floors along the streetscape with the residential above. You can see the, kind of, some of the central plaza spaces between the buildings with outdoor seating and lighting. And this is the main amenity feature for the residential component. This is kind of tucked in the middle of all the buildings. You can see our outdoor pool, our fitness center, rooftop terrace area for outdoor seating and dining. Moving on to Lot 2, this is the office building. This is the most, one of the bigger changes in the project on that side. Looking to kind of make this allow, asking for allowance to allow this building to range between one to five stories. Previously approved, it was fully a five-story building. We're asking for a range based on our potential tenants we're looking at. We're trying to market this, too. We want to have a little range to give us some opportunities based on tenant asks for that. As Matthew talked about, looking at lowering our reduction of our office space from 60,000 down to 12,000. So this will give us a range between 12,000 to 65,000 square feet, which would be a component of, the derivative of trying to determine how tall this building would be between one to five stories, and asking for a new component, which would be roughly about 8,000 maximum square feet of retail and/or restaurant space to be allowed in this building for the lower, for the first floor on the building itself. Right, previously, the design for the five-story building and the previously approved had a rooftop terrace area in that. We're asking to make this an optional patio in regards to that. It'll all depend on how tall this building gets and the types of tenants that we will be looking for in the building. So we're looking to make that rooftop patio an option. And one of the other components of this change to this portion of the development is remove the fountain or reflecting pool you see there on the front side of the building along Robert Rose Drive, and more or less removing that to expand the outdoor patio area with the anticipation of some outdoor dining experiences on that lower floor. Again, still utilizing the same building materials that were approved before. This was kind of the rendition that we looked at the building in regards to the five-story component that was approved last year, and we're gonna give you a rendition of potentially if this building would look like if it was only two stories on that side and without the top four terrace. Lot 3, this is the portion that was zoned CH last time around. We're asking to pull this in to make the entire development one giant PUD. This lot here, we can see here is a conceptual rendering for a potential retail user on the property in regards to its parking and its building location. You see some of the architectural features. Again, 35-foot is the same component that we had last time, along with masonry, all masonry exterior materials, and this would still be a one-story structure. We'll also be still sticking with our restrictions that we had outlined last time in regards to no gas stations, automotive repair, motor vehicle sales, and a few other items that we had approved last time. We're still staying with those this time. Wanted to give you guys a quick diagram in regards to the strong pedestrian connections we'll be providing with this. A lot of walkable experiences, whether they're sidewalks internally between the buildings, but also along our shared common drives, leading back to sidewalks along our existing public roadways of Robert Rose Drive and Medical Center Parkway. So it's a good walking experience for everyone in the area. Again, here's a little cross-section kind of showing you that common driveway that runs east to west in the middle of the development, kind of showing you the outdoor seating arrangements and stuff along the retail component, and then the streetscape with the parallel parking. And then looking off to your right-hand side would be kind of the area where McAllister's and our newly proposed commercial development would be on the corner of Robert Rose, Medical Center Parkway. This is kind of a visual to kind of give you an idea about what the streetscape would look like with the retail on the bottom and the residential above. Transportation plan, as I've kind of talked about, we've got some good connectivity through this development back to private drives and also public drives, as you can see here with the red arrows, especially on the southern portion with the connection between Lurithic Way, back over to the avenues, and also the same connection east to west between Maple Grove Drive and Robert Rose Drive, and also a common drive shared back out to Medical Center Parkway that bisects the property between McAllister's and the property that we're asking to be pulled into the PUD. As Matthew talked about, we do have a number of exceptions that we had, we had a number before that we already asked for. We're asking for some additional ones. As Matthew talked about, the reason for these exceptions is solely because we're asking to turn this into four separate lots of record. So by putting that property line in, it more or less changes the dynamics in regards to standards for landscape area and also other items like that, including lighting. So the exceptions you see listed in the book are requesting those items to be left out so that we can continue to allow the plan to move forward on that side. You can see here in regards to like the Lot 1 on that, Lot 1, we're looking for that to be a reduction, to reduce the amount of landscape area along the property line. Lot 2, same component there. You can see the red line kind of running through the parking lot. By running that property line down the middle of that tree island there, we don't have the typical lot, the green space along the property line, so we're asking that to be removed, but still providing the green space between the parking bays. Lot 3, a couple of exceptions there in regards to separations between the property line, landscape areas, and buildings. line, landscape areas, and buildings. And then again, the shared common access drive here, where again, talks about landscaping, but more importantly, asking for an exception in regards to the lighting standards that we will, that we were asking for that to be removed so that we are allowed to have light levels to exceed .5-foot candles, because this is more or less a shared environment, so everybody's light will be providing safety throughout the development. I appreciate your time, and I'm here for any questions now or after the public hearing.
Any questions? All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing on the zoning request, or excuse me, the zoning change. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll keep all your questions directed to the city council, you'll have three minutes if you're, as an individual, if you're five minutes representing a group. If you'll state your name and address, that would be appreciated. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning change, or excuse me, rezoning, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 23OZ41.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item 11, amending the PND zoning for property along Manson Pike. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is for the property on Manson Pike that was approved earlier this year for the PND zoning for the Rutherford Collegiate Prep Charter School. And there's the map. It's the property in the yellow color before you, it's on the north side of Manson Pike, and it butts to 840 on its rear side. So after their zoning was approved, they came to us and said they wanted to make a few changes under roof. But those changes increased the intensity just enough to where we felt that it was not something that we could be, that we could approve administratively and that required an amendment to their zoning plan. And just real briefly, because nothing on the site is changing, everything is happening under roof, I'll just mention the proposed changes. So what they're doing is they're taking the, what was proposed originally as the gymnasium, and they're creating additional classroom space by making it a two-story building. The building itself will be about five feet taller, but it will increase the building square footage overall from 56,000 to 61,000, increase the number of students at capacity from 770 to 1,000, increase the number of classrooms from 33 to 41, increase the number of teachers to 60, and increase the maximum building height, as I said, from 35 to 40. The site will remain as originally approved, but the intensity is increasing just a little bit. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on September the 6th and voted to recommend its approval to you. I don't believe Mr. Taylor has a formal presentation on this, because it's a pretty straightforward zoning request, but he's here if you have any questions before or after the public hearing, as am I.
Any questions? All right, we need to hold a public hearing on this rezoning, excuse me, this amending the PND zoning. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 23OZ42.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll consider a rezoning property along Medical Center Parkway. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This last public hearing tonight is for the rezoning of seven out parcels in front of the Avenue Shopping Center. When the Avenue Shopping Center was originally approved, the out parcels in front of the main shopping center along Medical Center Parkway were approved as being a part of the overall lot. The buildings there, with the exception of two, are all, have all historically been ground leased to the individual users. So Longhorn Steakhouse, Jared Jewelers, Buffalo Wild Wings, all the out parcels except for the Culvers and the small retail building with the Starbucks are still owned by Big V, formerly Heinz, formerly Cousins Faison, as a part of the overall Avenue Shopping Center lot. Culvers and the Starbucks parcels were developed as separate lots, and they received some variances when those developments occurred, since there were development standards that they were rubbing up against. So what Big V would like to do, they would like to have the flexibility to sell off their out parcels in the future, and so essentially, nothing is changing to this development except the fact that they are proposing to potentially create lot lines so that they could sell off these out parcels. It will still, it will still seem as one large development, and, but there could potentially be some lot lines and different ownership. So as I mentioned with the, with the other rezoning request on Medical Center Parkway, the creation of lot lines creates expectations regarding setbacks, landscaping. In the Gateway Design Overlay District, there are separation requirements from property lines that are a little bit greater than elsewhere in the city. So what, what they have done is they have requested that these seven out parcels be rezoned to PCD, Planned Commercial District, so that they can have some relief from those requirements that will be, that are created by the new lot lines. So there are a list of four or five areas that they need relief on through this process, and they're listed as exceptions in the pattern book. But for the most part, these are developed lots with the exception of just one, and nothing is changing except for the creation of lot lines along these proposed out parcels. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request on September the 6th and voted at that time to recommend its approval to the city council. Mr. Matt Taylor has a brief presentation that he'd like to give you prior to the public hearing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Matt Taylor of SEC. Do have this brief presentation. I think Matthew said pretty much everything I'd say, but as Mr. Blomley says, the part, the out parcels of the avenue along Medical Center Parkway, so it's just the pink area shown here on the aerial. You can see today there's on commercial highway with the GDO-1 overlay as well as a PSO overlay. The GDO-1 and the PSO overlays will remain in place after this. Here are the, some existing buildings. We are not proposing to change any architecture requirements for the existing or future buildings. So our request is for really seven out parcels that you see color-coded here. There are two other out parcels that have previously been sold off. One of those is where Culvers is, one is where, I think Starbucks is in the end cap. Our request involves just over 12 acres. We've limited these buildings to one to two stories in size. They will remain part of the Avenue Master Plan. We will enter into a shared parking agreement. All these out parcels were originally envisioned to share parking with the larger shopping center. That will continue to be the case in the future as well. And then the avenue, the master developer there will continue to maintain the landscape and along Medical Center Parkway, so it's all cut, trimmed, maintained, all in the same fashion as it is today. So again, the goal is to make this continue to look and appear and function as a single development, with the exception of some property lines introduced. Each site will continue to provide at least 20% open space. The formal open space will be like it is today, which is by the overall shopping center of the avenue. Most of that is located more toward the, kind of, the main street area to the southern portion. Our access points will remain the same as they previously have been designed, and then we'll be dedicating signal easement expansion at Willow Oak, which will accompany and complement the widening project that the city is currently under design with. And then we will, we will have to submit a re-subdivision plat prior to any of these being sold off. And this is just a blow-up showing a typical out parcel and how that's going to look. And so the pink and white line there would be the proposed property line, so it's loosely going to follow kind of back a sidewalk or back a curb in these areas. And it's just lists the exceptions, all of which have to do with separation from property line to drive aisle, as well as a, I think a rear setback having to do with where Buffalo Wild Wings is. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
Any questions, Mr. Taylor? All right, we'll hold a public hearing to rezon this 12 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 23OZ43.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to Planning Commission recommendations. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two public hearings that the Planning Commission recommended for approval at its meeting last week, and we are recommending public hearing dates of November the 30th, which would be the Thursday after Thanksgiving.
Can we get a motion for November 30th, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
All right, thank you, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you.
All right, we have the modified city code 2123C and 2171 administration. Mr. Tindall.
Yeah, this is a request of council to amend the ordinance that was drafted some time ago and language that's been in there since 1977, so almost 45 years ago, and kind of clean up that ordinance with language that's unenforceable. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
All right.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, resolution 23R30, schools budget amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Dr. Duke, you're always coming to us with a budget amendment.
Always, always, just for the fun of it. Tonight I'm presenting a resolution, I will say usually it's for more money, so that's good. Tonight I'm presenting a resolution.
Can you please talk to Chris Griffith about that?
I'm sorry?
Can you please talk to Chris Griffith about that?
I will, I'll do my best. Tonight I'm presenting a resolution for your approval to make amendments to our general purpose federal projects, school nutrition, and ESP funds. This amendment includes recognizing $369,000 in new revenue received from the FY24 Public Schools Safe Security Grant, as well as $135,000 in carryover funds from the FY23 Safe Schools Grant. Additionally, this amendment budgets unpaid purchase order balances that were not closed at June 30th, 2023, for items that were on backwater or projects not completed by the end of the fiscal year. And finally, this amendment budgets $70,000 from unassigned fund balance for a new maintenance vehicle to replace a 2004 vehicle that's been retired from service. All these amendments were approved by the school board on September 26th, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Duke?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you. I've got item one and three, we're going to do those after, at the end of 21. Number 16, housing rehabilitation 1110 Wingate. Ms. Holt, it's good to see you.
Good to see you, Mayor, Council. The item before you is a contract rehab, a single-family dwelling located at 1110 Wingate Street. The home is in desperate need of a new roof, along with replacement of some rafters, replacement of sheetrock ceilings, electrical upgrades, and other rehab work. New Creations was a low bidder at $130,100. Departmental policy requires that any contracts over $25,000 be approved by the council, and the funding is coming completely from HUD's Community Development Block Plan. Be glad to answer any questions, ma'am.
So move.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to purchase of a service truck.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The Fleet Service Department would like to purchase a heavy service truck for the use to repair vehicles on the public roadways that break down and need repairs. With the growth of the city and the size of its fleet, we feel it'd be recommended that we have a better outfitted and larger vehicle to help take care of any issues that may come up on the roadway. The expenses for this will come out of the other capital sources fund, an amount of We hope, we hope this will help us maintain the city's infrastructure. If there are any questions, I'm here to answer them.
No questions, move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you. Amendment three to Motorola radio system maintenance agreement. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. For your consideration, this evening is a request to approve an amendment to our current radio system maintenance agreement with Motorola. This request is being made due to the warranty on our logging recorder expiring and the need for continued hardware and software support for the system as part of our digital radio system. The total cost to these amendments would be $656,402, and the first installment of $105,119 would be funded through the department's FY24 budget. And then subsequent payments would be presented in future budgeting requests. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chief Bowen?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 19, purchase of police vehicles from Allen J Automotive.
Yes, sir. Request the approval to purchase two unmarked vehicles from Allen J Automotive through state contract. These vehicles will be used in our special investigation section, and they would be funded by the drug fund at a total cost of $98,248. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to Vitra Inc. Subscription Training and Equipment Partnership Agreement.
Yes, sir. For your consideration, is a request to approve an agreement with Vitra to provide training equipment and maintenance for the department's simulator. We have been using the current simulator since 2018, and this agreement will allow us to have equipment upgrades and continued maintenance and support. There's a one-time expense of $11,770 in addition to the first annual payment of $63,538, excuse me, which is provided for in the department's current budget. Subsequent payments would be requested through annual operating budgets. At this time, I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chief?
So move. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, we have a purchase of a public works vehicle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm filling in for Mr. Hillis, who couldn't be here tonight. The Street Department is seeking your approval to purchase three GMC 2500 HD trucks and the reallocation of department CIP funds. These vehicles will serve as replacements for high-mileage trucks in our current inventory that are in a state of decline. They will be purchased from Wilson County Motors through the State of Tennessee contract pricing. The expense totaling $138,000 is funded by the fiscal year '21 and '22 CIP budget, which which includes a reallocation of $38,000 in CIP funds from the straight paving machine line item. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you. All right, we'll move to item one from the consent agenda pilot program for Murfreesboro Housing Authority.
There's an agreement with Murfreesboro Housing Authority, request for council to approve the agreement of a pilot program. We met with Murfreesboro Housing Authority, and they requested that we have a pilot be put into place, similar to what we've done in other projects that they have done, so that they're paying a property tax amount that's consistent with the income and rental ratios that they have on these types of properties. So we've worked closely, Adam and I have worked closely with Thomas to come up with the agreement and the amounts involved, so happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Yes, I noticed on 1A where we are talking about, are we talking about Murfreesboro alone on that MSA, or I read here where Davidson and Franklin was included, is that correct?
That, that is correct. I've checked that was with, with Thomas Rowe, the director of Murfreesboro Housing Authority, and he said that was the correct median income measure to use.
Well, to me, and I'm trying to understand this, since this is talking about the income, if we are combining Davidson County and Williamson County and applying 80% of that income for rent, I don't think it's fair that we include those two counties, especially Williamson being the richest county in the state. Why can't we just, and they have higher income and the demographics are different, why can't Murfreesboro just have our own MSA?
Because it's, it's a federal requirement for, for the federal housing, and what this does is it actually, it, it makes the housing available to more families, not fewer.
Well, okay. We have a range of $25,000 to $60,000 income to qualify for this. Seems like we're squeezing people out under this shelter rent. I guess I have a whole lot of questions on this. Can we table this so I can get with you all on, because I'm not agreeing with this?
Ultimately, well, what this, we don't control, the city does not control these, the income eligibility. We, this, and this con, this agreement is not setting that. That is set by the nature of the project and the federal grant funding. All this agreement is doing is saying that essentially, instead of the residents of these housing units paying the regular, what would regularly be assessed as a property tax, they're either paying, they're paying, they would pay the lesser of 10% of the shelter rent or $50 per unit per year. And in this particular development for Mercury Court, it would be, they would be paying $50 per year. That's in essence what this agreement is doing. We can't change this definition of LIHTC projects. That's, the city of Murfreesboro just doesn't have that control.
Yeah, and the definition is just reciting what that term means under the IRS rules and the FHA rules. We don't, this is all, as far as rent and everything else, that's Murfreesboro Housing Authority, not, not the city of Murfreesboro. All we're doing is saying that we're going to enter a pilot program within, with them, setting an amount for property tax at this very, very low rate. So as far as rent or everything else, that's, that's not part of this agreement, it's not what this agreement does, nor is it anything that Murfreesboro controls.
We, they still, as MHA, still legally have to pay property tax.
Because of the way that they're doing this project, yes, the private.
Correct. So what we're doing is setting up a pilot program that specific units don't have to pay.
Right.
Property tax, which in essence is lowering what the amount of rent they would have to, have to charge.
Exactly, that's.
That's correct. And, and just so you, how this project works, the land continues to be owned by Murfreesboro Housing Authority. Murfreesboro Housing Authority is tax exempt, however, the structures on the property are owned by a partnership. That, that partnership is not a tax exempt entity, and so it's, it's the improvements on the land that are taxed, and under this agreement, you would get either the 10% of the shelter rent or $50, whichever is less, and in this case, it's going to be, with respect to these specific units at Mercury Court, is going to end up being $50 per year that they would, that, that the partnership would have to pay in property tax. $50 per year, per unit.
Right.
Is that for county and city, or just city?
What was that?
Is that for county? That's just city, not county.
It's, and I believe that they, they have a separate agreement with the county.
Right. It's going through the county.
Or, or it may fall under their current agreement.
Okay.
Yeah. One other thing is that this agreement would apply, or could apply if city council wanted to, to any future projects undertaken by MHA. We would just need to amend it to add the new units or the new projects.
All right. Any other questions?
So move.
I'll second, so we can have a discussion. Do you, are you?
Any other discussion?
Have any other discussion?
I'll get with the staff after council meeting. No, I don't have any other discussion right now. Thank you.
I mean, I think the overall.
It's a good thing.
It's a good thing. We just don't have any ability to change any of the.
Can't control it.
Yeah.
And, and this was the amount that was essentially requested by MHA, too.
And a lot of people get confused, thinking that MHA is a part of the city of Murfreesboro because it's the Murfreesboro Housing Authority, when Murfreesboro Housing Authority is a completely separate entity outside of the city of Murfreesboro. The own, you know, tack, there's no, we provide no funding to MHA. The only thing that we do as a council have authority over, we do appoint individuals to that, that board, but other than that, MHA is completely autonomous and well-run. I mean, MHA is doing some really.
Innovative.
Good things and innovative things. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Ms. Brown, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
No.
Vice Mayor Shaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have item three, affordable housing legacy point.
Okay, is this item, is it geared for mixed income?
I'm sorry?
Is this geared toward mixed income?
It's for low and moderate income people, yes.
So is, is this taking public housing and converting to low-income tax credit?
No. Now, this, these two homes are in a Habitat subdivision, and the purchasers made application to our department, Community Development, to take advantage of a down payment assistance for first-time homeowners, and it comes through the CBDG grant that we get from HUD every year.
So are you talking about vouchers?
No, it's not do vouchers. They, we just give them a check at closing to help for their down payment of the house that they're purchasing from Habitat.
We haven't had many of these come through. It's been some time that.
I agree. It's something that we want to publicize a little bit more. Habitat makes good advantage of it, but we'd like to get the word out on the streets that anybody, first-time home buyers, can take advantage of it if they income qualify.
But the CBDG money is money that has come from the federal government.
To us.
To us.
Yes.
That is earmarked and specified for specific programs. So once that money, you know, once people take benefit, we, several years ago, we had lots of people who were taking benefit of this, the number was a lot, a lot less.
Yeah.
And once that money is gone, it's gone until Congress refunds it or replenishes it the next budget year.
Yeah.
And under the current political climate in Washington, who knows when we'll have a budget, so just thought I'd throw that in there.
Mayor's on the roll.
So, yes.
So is this dealing with Section 8?
No, no, ma'am.
That's why I said I wanted to talk to somebody about.
These two people would buy the home just like anybody else. They have to, Habitat requires them to save a 1% down payment, put sweat equity in building the house, go through budgeting classes, all that's done by Habitat, not us. But then Habitat will refer them to make application to us for a $10,000 down payment. So we'll actually have a check cut, and we'll take it to the closing, and we'll take that off the total cost of the house. So it's just down payment assistance is all it is. They don't have to pay it back.
Thank you for helping me understand it. Appreciate that.
All right, any other questions?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye. Aye.
Vice Mayor Shaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, I don't think we have any board and commission appointments. We have some beer permits.
We have five regular permits for ownership changes at convenience stores located at 15, 1415 Memorial Boulevard, 3392 Memorial Boulevard, 1251 South Church Street, 1320 Memorial Boulevard, and 2430 South Church Street, and a special event permit for Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce for an event on November 14th. All applicants have met requirements for permit and are recommended for approval pending final building and codes inspections for the regular permit and special event permit for the special event beer permit.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, you have a couple of statements to be paid.
We have an invoice from SRVH Law for $59,608.19 to be paid from the general fund legal FY24 operating budget. The city attorney emailed council regarding this invoice earlier this week or today, and we have a payable to Jack Gritten Client Trust for $1.4 million to be paid from the 2021 CIP. This payable also includes an approval of CIP reallocation from the land acquisition contingency to the South Church broad line items in the 2021 bond. The CIP funds reallocations request form is attached with the statement presented to council. The deputy city attorney emailed council regarding this payable a couple of weeks ago. If there are any questions, council will have to go into executive session to answer those questions.
So move. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any other business from staff?
Right now, we're planning on meeting November the 2nd, Thursday evening.
Okay. It's hard to believe that we're already getting in the holiday season.
Yeah.
Geez, it is. Any other business from council? All right. Will we be meeting next week, Craig?
Not right now. There's no plans right now to meet next week.
Well, between now and November 2nd is Halloween, so I want to tell everyone to be safe on Halloween and.
Come downtown, trick-or-treat around Square. Always a big crowd down there, so come on, come on down.
It's also the third weekend in October. We know what that is, don't we, Bill?
Ah, let's see. Yeah, you can come to that, too.
So with that, we'll say go Vols, and we're adjourned.
There you go.